It is now six o'clock. I hereby call the May twenty-third City Commission Work Session Meeting to order. Please call the roll.
Mayor Hassel.
Here.
Commissioner Butler.
Here.
Commissioner Morris.
Present.
We have a quorum.
Very good. Please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our work session item tonight is pavement management update, and it has a couple of different phases, but Rob Ott will start talking about it.
I'll try and get through it fairly quick. There's only fifty-some slides, but I can just ask for questions and sit down, or I can sprint through them here. Some of them are, you're very familiar, so Rob Ott, Director of Public Works. Before I get started, I do have Jeff Davis, who's our street superintendent. Jeff, just what, last month, two months ago, thirty years with the city of Manhattan? And then Dan Tyson, kind of his right-hand person for everything else, and all the operations are also here in the audience tonight. Nothing new here. Our lane miles haven't changed a lot. You've all heard me say that our local streets have the majority of the lane miles, or, in this case, have converted it to square yards. Please do understand that arterials and collectors, it's just kind of a reminder, they do carry the most average daily traffic, and they do carry the heaviest loads. So even though the local streets are more in quantity, a lot of the abuse occurs definitely on our arterials and collector streets, so we kind of do look at those three categories. This is nothing new. It's just like grade school, zero to a hundred, hundred being good, zero not being very good. Distresses, we use a pavement condition index. It's basically the density and the severity of this distress within a roadway segment that determines the pavement condition index. Again, kind of like grade school, and this happens, I think the next slide's got the colors a little bit better, but this is kind of the industry standard that we use and our consultant used for us. Again, here's the colors here and different ranges and so forth. The industry standard is try to stay around seventy. This happens to be last year's PCI assessment, so you can kind of see our different categories, obviously going from best to worse, and how many, let's see here, and how many segments or lane miles in which group they're in. So this is updated as of March of 2023. Our current PCI is hovering right at seventy. So the way we update this with our consultant is all the projects that we've completed, so the asphalt mill and overlay, concrete panel replacement, all the work we've done on Kimball Avenue, College Avenue, all those different segments that have been fixed all get added in. So obviously, if a roadway segment has, say, a sixty, well, if we completely rebuild it, then we upgrade it up to like a ninety-eight or a ninety-five. So, and just like your house, just like my son's learning how to paint my house right now, because it's been ten years, you know, you can either paint one side each year, and then you have the whole house done in X number of years, or you have to wait and you have to paint the whole house at once because it's all deteriorated and sun-faded. Roadways are no different. They deteriorate each and every year, just like the paint on our houses or roofs. This is an analysis by the software, looking at different budget levels. So right now, this, I guess it'd be orange with the squares, is basically what our budget is, and our current funding at roughly four million a year. And our backlog is sitting at about fifty-seven million. In other words, if the mayor was to go to Washington DC and get us a massive grant this afternoon and came home with fifty-seven million, that doesn't mean I can hire all those contractors to do all that work at once, but that's the backlog of segments that are needing to be addressed and so forth. Yep, no, go ahead, sir.
So at what level is the things that constitute the fifty-seven percent fair or are worse than fair? When you have fifty-seven million dollars worth of projects, which ones does that include?
So I'd have to go back and dig into the report, but I'm pretty sure it would be probably fair and below.
Okay.
It's typically your worst segments.
Okay.
You, the way the software works is it'll pick low-cost solutions for you. Kind of like fixing your, I'll go back to the house example. It's kind of like fixing small repairs on your roof before water gets inside your house and destroys drywall and insulation and so forth. Roadway's the same way, so the asphalt mill and overlays, if you can do, you know, anything that's not complete reconstruction down to that base are always the cheaper solutions, and you get more square yards fixed. The problem is, is eventually you've got to address those things that are frankly impassable. And there's definitely some segments out there. I can give you a laundry list in each of your neighborhoods, whether it's Northfield or West Side of Town or the middle of town. I think you all know those different segments, but yeah, that's a good question, Mayor. And there's some prediction analysis also that we asked, we asked the consultant to do for us. So if you wanted to reduce, oh, I'm sorry. This slide here is the five-year post-rehab. So obviously, we're not going to change our, unless the mayor comes back with a huge grant, which probably isn't going to happen. But as we continue moving forward with our current sales tax, our current gas tax, how much work the street crews can do, you know, we're looking at having a pavement condition index around seventy-two in five years from now, but our backlog number will increase to about sixty million. So that backlog, those segments that are worse are only going to get, are only going to get more worse, if that makes any sense, okay? The next slide, this is kind of the prediction analysis, the what-ifs. What if I did play with the budget? Obviously, we know for the next four years, I think I said, a minute ago, I said five years. This is year six of the program. The next four years, we're locked in with our sales tax of the point two, as well as what we receive for gas tax. And this chart here kind of shows if you were to increase your different budgets, what would your pavement condition index be in the future, and then also what would your backlog be? So obviously, I've already mentioned, you know, if we stay on our current path, you're going to have a backlog of roughly sixty million. If you were to increase your budget to roughly five-point-six-five, or let's just say five-and-a-half million in contractor, you're going to actually reduce your backlog to roughly forty-three million, and then you end up with a higher pavement condition index of roughly seventy-six. So that's kind of the prediction analysis that the software did. Obviously, that's assuming, you know, deterioration is uniform, winters are uniform, you know, all those sorts of things, traffic loads, so on and so forth, as static conditions, okay? This is just kind of a reminder of when we went out for the ballot question back in 2016. And we promised, and when it was passed, this is how we would spend the money. I'll get to some slides here later, but we're, on average, on the fuel tax, we're about one-point-two million over the last, since 2017. For the sales tax, we're about two-point-one million average in the sales tax. And then general fund, that's probably where we struggled the most with our street crews between just world events like COVID, where we only had half the crews working at a time. We had the 2019 flood, where they spent a lot of time on the levee pumping water. And then eight weeks last year, we picked up trees throughout the entire community. So we lost eight weeks last year in our prime season. Kind of just a reminder again of the ballot question. Five percent of the proceeds goes towards Safe Routes to School. Remainder, ninety-five percent towards street maintenance repair. Again, this is not enhancements. This is not adding turn lanes. It's not adding traffic signals. It is strictly for rehab of existing streets, and we have not spent that money that way. We have limited, we have done very limited debt service with the sales tax. I think College Avenue, we did the four-year temp note. It's the only one that comes to the top of mind. We have not purchased equipment. We have not paid for crews for their salaries, or the sales tax. Again, I kind of control the balance of the fund by how much I bid out. So if money comes in, we bid out that much, and so on, so forth. We spend roughly, we're actually a little bit ahead right now on the five percent of the revenues towards Safe Routes to School, and I've got a slide coming up here in just a minute. So total revenues from the sales tax we received to date, as of, I guess, January of 2023, roughly just under fifteen million dollars since 2017. Obviously, the question passed in 2016. You don't actually begin to get revenues until like May or June, I think that is, April. And obviously, that continued to climb and increase, and I've got some slides on inflation here in a little bit. But, you know, with inflation, obviously, you do still collect more sales tax. Our expenditures, you know, obviously, we were very concerned back in the COVID years that sales tax was going to take a big dip. We spent quite a bit last year, and I just bid out, we just received bids today for more concrete work in the Grandview area. Roughly one-point-four million is what the bids came in. So we have even more work that we've already bid out for 2023 and obligated. Here's kind of the crunch of all the different numbers. I mentioned before on the Safe Routes to School program, we're ahead on the five percent. We still have four more years, so we've kind of held back on what projects. We need to let revenues kind of catch up. We're roughly seven percent spent. And again, I don't think that's necessarily a bad thing. We just need to make sure at the very end of the program, we don't exceed that five percent. Lots of projects already out to bid on 2023, and I can talk about those in a minute. These are the different Safe Routes to School projects that we have done. We do have an updated, I know my staff has a draft of new projects that have been identified throughout the community for schools. I think there's somewhere between sixteen and seventeen different projects. Again, that's more for a question perhaps in 2025 or 2026, whether we decide to put it back on the ballot, or if the commission at that time wants to even propose it as a question to the community. Thirteen projects have been completed, and I don't know. Or else you got anything specific. I'm going to keep going. Here's just, again, kind of all the different numbers. And again, we've updated that master plan, and there's about sixteen or seventeen newly identified projects beyond those thirteen that we've completed. Gas tax. So the gas tax does get used on debt service for projects. We do still, as I mentioned before, our average is about one-point-two million spent with contractors strictly on pavement preservation. These funds have been used in the past from everything, from employee salaries, which we've leaned ourselves off extremely. I think we're down to just one employee. Provides our local match grants for projects with KDOT, and so on and so forth. We do use it to purchase. Once Jeff and Dan go through the general fund for concrete, asphalt, and road rock, steel and rebar, we do use gas tax to purchase some of those items, so we do use that for expenditures for those same materials and so forth. Some years, it just all depends on how busy they are and how much they can get done. State motor fuel tax, this is a very old slide, and it's still accurate. So the motor fuel tax has not changed in terms of its formula. Total revenue over the, since 2017, looking at the same time period as our sales tax has been in place, been roughly twelve million. Our expenditures on contractor-only maintenance has been roughly seven million. Again, in 2020, we didn't know what the heck was going to happen with the COVID and pandemic, so we leaned off big time. Roughly of the revenue that we do receive, roughly sixty percent is spent on contractor maintenance. And again, let's see, I did mention before debt service on Kimball Avenue, Casement Road. We've got the Fort Riley Boulevard, Sea Clip project going on right now. Points and Juliet, Six Hundred Block of Points, all those are part of those grant matches that we have now. Probably the biggest one that'll give the most heartache will be the Anderson Waterline from, oh, it's not Hillview. It's basically from Connecticut almost to Sunset. I always forget the street just before sunset. But that's a water line replacement plus major panel replacement for that street, because, as you all know, it's been patched multiple times. Let's see here. Our street crews, obviously, they do more than just repair streets, perform snow operations. You know, they do try to produce roughly a million dollars in value compared to contractors. I've got some slides here kind of showing the increase in price per square yard and so forth. They also have to respond to emergency repairs. Flood fight, I mentioned 2019, the tornado pickup, we lost almost eight weeks last year. So it's not just street repairs that they do. They do a lot of pothole patching. I think I've got some numbers here. Obviously, in 2017, we started out very strong, and 2018, and then things have kind of tapered off, unfortunately. Asphalt, that's just the amount of asphalt that they've installed sometime. And this isn't potholes. I got a different slide for potholes here. But essentially, it all depends, we purchased a roller, a compact roller, not too long ago, and that's actually helped quite a bit with the compaction, and then allowed us to do some slightly larger patches where we didn't have to call in shilling and, you know, do a much larger project and pay for all that mobilization. Potholes, it just continues and continues. Obviously, the street guys, every year, we probably meet two or three times. We talk about which segments do you get the most pothole reported selling. And the reported app is very useful to us. We encourage the community to constantly use that. That's how we kind of react. We can't be everywhere. And it does help us map out, okay, if we could reduce just the sheer number of potholes on this one segment or this high-volume roadway, that's where we try and target some of our contractor maintenance and so forth. Overall summary, again, we are meeting our targets for both the sales tax and the gas tax. I've talked before about the crews and their challenges and other duties they have. 2023, we have already bid, and we have already awarded Mill and Overlay for Casement Road for that asphalt segment that's up there, as well as the Highland Meadows subdivision. The Grandview neighborhood is being coordinated with the water line that just bid today. So there's kind of a, that's going to have to be done over multiple years. Obviously, Anderson Avenue is going to get redone, and that's probably going to take two years. We're going to start on the southern half of Grandview, and then there will probably be a second, if not maybe even a third phase, to finish up the Grandview area. I've talked about the Anderson Waterline. You know about Fremont. Fremont's currently under construction from Eleventh all the way to North Manhattan, and we're making that a uniform pavement. The Kimball and Grandmere Roundabout, I'm sure you haven't heard anything about that. That project started this week, and obviously, the pavement condition up there was horrendous. And then we also have, starting next week, buyer construction will be up on Browning near Anthony Middle School, addressing all those joint failures. Next four years, this is kind of what we're looking at. There are more projects in Northview area for asphalt. In fact, I'll show you, some of the reports are the consultant report that was produced, and they had some projects identified in the Northview area for asphalt mill and overlay. We also wish, we want to address, just like we're addressing in front of Anthony, I want to address Walters Drive in front of Eisenhower Middle School. And then Northfield, we've heard, and the pavement is in rough shape there as well. Grandview Terrace, I've already talked about that, multiple years phasing. And these are just some of the other different subdivisions. We do have some full-depth asphalt repair. We shall see how those come to fruition or not. Sunset, you know, we have an RFP out. I think Commissioner Butler, you're actually on that selection committee. And that selection and direction will kind of determine the outcome on that, but that pavement's rough. Arterial streets, they need full depth with Anderson from K-113 to Reath Avenue. I've had some discussions about converting that and removing all that concrete and going to asphalt that would allow me to have basically asphalt from Connecticut all the way to Annenberg, which would make it a lot easier in terms of management for Mill and Overlay in the future, pavement markings and so forth. So that's one that's very high on the list for next year. I just, I don't know, we had so much going on this year, I didn't think the community could take too many more orange cones. But it's also a budget and just capacity standpoint for contractors as well. We'll continue to balance the work between major streets versus local streets. We know that sales tax very much passed from a grassroots standpoint. Folks wanted to have good streets in front of their homes. Realtors told me that, you know, when I was doing the education campaign, that, you know, it does have an impact on the saleability of homes and the value of homes. So we'll continue to balance that, continue to work on other things other than just arterials and collectors. Inflation, it is what it is. Back in 2017, if you were to replace, and these are low bids that I took from those years from awarded contracts, in 2017, remove and replace one square yard of six-inch concrete in 2017 was just a little bit over forty dollars, and now we're pushing almost a hundred dollars a square yard. So that's definitely an increase. Asphalt's no different. Again, it is what it is. You can see the prices in 2017 on what one ton of asphalt cost us versus the recent bids for casement and, shoot. Highland Meadows, sorry. Too many subdivisions. Probably the other thing that I wanted to talk about, you notice the red X up here. Last time we had this conversation, last year, the direction was not to have a steering committee look at perhaps a ballot question either in '24 or '25. Obviously, the program ends in 2027. I don't know, Ron, if you have any bigger picture philosophy you want to share with the commission right now of other initiatives and competing interests? But we're kind of on that path of either '24 or '25, so.
Yeah, I would just suggest that there's probably some other competing question impacts, whether or not you're going to renew the quality-of-life bond issue, whether or not we consider maybe a permanent sales tax of some kind in lieu of property taxes? So we've got another one percent we could go, but it takes voter approval. So if you did another half cent to underpin some of those things, those are just needs to be part of the overall discussion and strategies. I think in general, I think this tax, obviously, it was well-supported. I think the more we show for accomplishments, the more likely that they'll continue to favor renewal. So I'm not sure this one's as critical to go earlier, where some other ones might, and then we have to balance it with other initiatives and questions on the ballot from the other jurisdictions, and see where some of those things fit in so that it doesn't have, certainly don't want our own competing questions on a particular ballot. So those are just some thoughts, and I don't know that we need significant impact or feedback today, but we just kind of want to plant the seed that we are pleased with the way it's going, but it isn't buying as much, obviously. So that's whether just a strict renewal of the two-tenths would work. We're not going to make up ground, so, because it just doesn't buy as much, so.
When we started this sales tax, this sales tax, we thought we had solved it. We were putting two million a year into maintenance, and this sales tax was going to give us another two million dollars a year, and we wouldn't have to deal with it again. But, you know, look at inflation and look, it's not just inflation, it's the cost of everything. I am a little bit surprised that asphalt is so much more than, is more expensive than concrete.
Price of oil influences that a lot?
Just took me back. I didn't really, just.
And that unit was in tons versus.
It's not an apples and apples.
Okay, not on the road.
Yeah.
Okay.
So is the, you said the quality of life, that's the junior high indoor facility and the CECO thing and all that?
Preparation.
And so that's, okay. Do we have a bunch more projects that we're looking at for a quality-of-life issue like that?
Yeah, I think there's a lot on that list of things that are potential items. That's part of the discussion that needs to happen, too. I know the Park Rec wants to update their master plan to kind of look at what those are and then what priorities, part of that would be, you know, we think that we did a specific Parks and Rec survey in 2017. Obviously, there's been support for an indoor pool.
Right.
That's probably one of the bigger ones that would have a huge impact as well as operational expenses, so. But those are certain aspects. Obviously, there's always a desire for trails and other park improvements, mainly replacing things that are aging.
Is that a quarter percent also?
Yep, it's a quarter percent.
Yeah, that ain't going to go very far for a water indoor, water thing.
Yeah, and I'm at point two right now. And Commissioner Morris is right, you know, and we, I can't imagine if we didn't have this two million. You know, there's been a number of Safe Routes projects that have been accomplished that we didn't have the answer for, and we've been in a lot of different neighborhoods. Not in everyone's neighborhood, but we've been in a lot of folks' neighborhoods, so.
And I think, you know, I think I'm pleased we've been able to maintain our investment that we said we were going to maintain from our own crews. We haven't been able to do as much because of competing interests that were a higher priority for storm cleanups and different other types of responses that our crews do, but we didn't divert any of those funds for anything else. We've just, we've carried them over and been able to continue to expend them on things, so I'm pleased with that.
The voters' expectation was that we would devote the money to the infrastructure.
Yeah, but I just want to comment on that discussion on sales tax. I'm not real enthused about raising sales taxes. You know, we're right close to ten percent, and I think that's just not going to sell. So unless something gives, you know, we're not going to be able to increase the amount of sales tax on the road. But maybe we can use, you know, we're getting more money in the general fund on the regular sales tax, so maybe we just need to commit more of that, you know, to it. And, you know, people don't want the property tax raised either. And, you know, people don't want the property tax raised either. You know, so that's the other problem. They want us to go with a revenue neutral rate, so that, that's the conflict. And, and, you know, but when I hear, you know, people send me emails and complain about different things, and roads is always top of the list, you know, potholes, things like that, I mean, it's, it's right there. So I think we need to, you know, look at our priority list and see if we can't put some more money into it. Because clearly, if we hadn't passed this sales tax, we'd be in a real jam right now. I mean, that, that, that thing has done well. And, and I guess the, the piece I'm missing here, like if, like if I was going to say, okay, we need to add another million. What, what I want to know is, you know, we could give you a whole bunch of money, but I don't think you can find the people to actually do the work.
It, it is a balancing act with the contractors, you know.
So it'd be interesting if you could estimate that, because it wouldn't do us any good to say, okay, you know, let's, let's increase the sales tax or pull money from the general fund, and we give you six million, but you can't spend it. So, so that, that, that's the piece that we really need to know. What's, what's realistic, you know, based on the availability of the people that are here? And, you know, from what I'm hearing, I, I don't think people get upset with that. I'd like to see us, you know, put this back up for a vote at, at least the level it's at and see what happens and do it sooner than the expiration date because it allows for planning. You know, we did that with the economic development thing, and it, it makes it so that at least you can anticipate instead of, you know, it's on the ballot in November and, and you're sitting there, what, how much money are we going to have in January? You don't know. And so we need to, we need to look at it, you know, from, from that point. And I'm glad to hear that reported app is working. I've always, you know, been an advocate of that thing. And, and I know every time I've used it, people got a response. And, and I've advocated to people, hey, if you've got a problem, go out there, take a picture of the pothole, you know, put it in there. In fact, I used it, I think, a week ago on a, on a sign and something on a stoplight. Somebody cornered me, and they didn't have the reported app, so they used my phone to report it. But, but the answer came back within three days, problem was solved, so they were quite happy. I told them, I said, you can't use my phone anymore, though, you got to put it on your phone.
So are we getting multiple bids on most of the street projects? Or is it just Larson and Bayer, Larson and Bayer, Larson and Bayer?
Unfortunately, like today, I only got one bid on the concrete. We've had other bids, let's see, Grand Mirror Roundabout, didn't we have five, Ron?
You did.
We had five. So.
It was a kind of a pleasant anomaly.
It's hard for me to answer Commissioner Butler's question a little bit, because as their workload ticket fills up for the year, the longer you wait, you know, sometimes you have less contractors. So we've tried to be more aggressive this year and get more bids out early. So, I don't know, Mayor, it, it.
You never know.
We certainly try and talk to contractors, what's your workload for the next year or the following year? You know, does this project interest you? But it is, I mean, there are less contractors out there and there's consolidation.
And then, then the other issue, and you mentioned it, is the number of cones, because I find it humorous, you know, I'll get a bunch of emails, this needs to be fixed. And then as soon as you start repairing it, I get a bunch of emails, why are we fixing all these roads at the same time? So, so I appreciate, you know, I, I know, and I tell people, I said, hey, Public Works looks at this, and we realize that if we have money for three projects and it gums up traffic so bad, we can only do two. We can't do three this year. So that's got to be factored into it also, because, you know, we could throw enough money at it, shut the whole town down. You know, nobody could get anywhere, you'd have to walk, because there'd be cones every place.
Yeah, and, and there's certainly some major projects that are going to affect Manhattan, and they're KDOTs. When they go do the, when they shut down US 24 between K-113 and K-13, that, that's going to have a significant routing impact on us. Marlat's going to be busy again. We've asked them for a temporary traffic signal at Marlat and K-113, just because. And we, and we're trying to get, and we have our large remaining project in North Campus, which is Dennison and Kimball. So that's the reason why Grand Mirror and Kimball's going now. Everyone's mad, why can't you stay off Kimball one year? Well, I can't, because I got, it just stacks up on me. And we're trying to finish up the North Campus corridor and for N-Bath and everything else, so. It's, I won't say that we have it all figured out, because we don't. And we make the best decisions we can with the information, and hopefully, weather doesn't beat us up and get good contractors that produce, so.
I, I would not want to go forward now with a, a sales tax initiative. It's way too early, maybe two years. But I do like the idea of a steering committee, because as, as we have done in the past, the steering committee has helped educate the public. They've gone out and done presentations to the community organizations, and I just think it, it's a way of spreading the information and everybody becomes an advocate eventually. And the way you select the projects, too, because that means there's something in everybody's backyard or front yard that, that they all want or we all want. So it does make a difference. I think that steering committee part has worked well for past sales taxes. And rather than, you know, it's embarrassing to put a sales tax up on the ballot and have it defeated. So, you know, what, I want us to think carefully and balance it so that it's acceptable to the public. Because what was six years ago, what we thought was a forever solution, eh, you know, maybe, is obviously inadequate now. And so we have to look at improving it. I, I know that, like the, I wanted to ask about Browning there in front of the school, and what caused that to fail? It seems to me it's a different quality of pavement than some other areas, and that that's why it's failing. Is that true? Is it just my perception?
Sure, so I can, I can talk about concrete a little bit. So prior to me starting here, the city had an approved mixed design.
Yeah.
And what, when Brian Johnson came on, because he had a concrete, him and his father used to be a concrete, and he, contractor, fix streets in, in Omaha and Nebraska. So Brian had a wealth of experience and contacts. And we had changed, so in 2009, I had changed some of the standard specs to beef up the base. But I never messed with the mixed design. And we continued to have joint failure. KDOT, at that time, came out with a certified large aggregate report and established some testing for that. And unfortunately, there was large aggregate limestone that was used throughout the entire state that was insufficient in terms of strength. Then on top of it, for us here locally, Brian actually kind of skipped K-State, because we got tired of some of the lines, and he went to someone outside the state, and we had some investigation done. And part of it was ASR, which is alkaline solenical reaction. And we added fly ash from coal fire plants like Jeffries into our mixed design, which helped reduce that reaction between the alkaline and basically salt. Salt water is more viscous, and it gets into those joints and then expands and, and breaks, because concrete pours. So when we changed that mixed design, we've seen much better results. And hopefully, our pavements do start hitting that twenty and twenty-five year lifespan that they should. McCall Road, when we expanded it for Menards, was the first time Brian and I used that mixed design. And we've been using it ever since.
And that's worked well.
We feel it's performing better than some of the older mixed designs.
Yeah.
And, and again, Bayer Construction, who provides the majority of the large aggregate, they do have a quarry that meets KDOT spec, and that's what we spec now. So that's, that's on the concrete side.
I really like something you did, you've done before on Fort Riley Boulevard, and then I just recently saw it over on, from McCall on to Highway 24. And it's the dividing the, the center line painting. And it seems like, I mean, some of the regular painting I see lasts a month or two, and it, you know, it's so weak, it's got to be. But I, you have some of the, I think it's expensive, it's why you don't use it. But I, I was really glad to see it over at McCall and Highway 24, because the traffic over there is just horrendous these days. And anything that you can do to improve that, I'd like for you to go get, you employees here to go get stuck in that traffic, not, don't go north and west. Go east, because it is really frustrating for all of the people stuck there. And I think it's helpful to experience what they're experiencing. But anyway, I, I like that, and is it so expensive, we can't use that more often, that center line?
It is very expensive, it's expensive per foot.
Is it tape? What is it?
Uh, some of it is tape, yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
What about better paint than the?
There's, there certainly are different qualities of paint. There's epoxy, there's thermoplastic, and then there's LP or latex paint, which is what our crews apply.
Yeah.
Tape is probably the highest end, also the most labor intensive.
Yeah.
Prep intensive as well. So epoxy machines, uh, they're not as much as fire trucks. Chief, chief isn't here, so I won't pick on it.
I'd like to bump it up to the next level above latex, whatever that is, just to.
They're not, they're not cheap trucks, and you got to put a lot of it down to make it worth your, which means more staff and.
Yeah, how soon will the Points and Juliet and that sequence that's being repaired there, will that be open before? It looks like things are kind of at a standstill for a couple of weeks.
I know that there's some delays on some lighting poles for the 600 block. They got a back order of October. Now the roadway should be open, hopefully, before school starts. But I can certainly get the detailed updates.
No, I just wondered if things are moving along, or they'll be moving along, and they're just stalled, or. I, I know that you have supply issues.
We have some.
Everybody does, I think, but it's good to just have the public understand. And I noticed that the Grandview, I'm sorry, the Kimball Roundabout at Grand Mirror wasn't blocked yet. It said they were going to close it yesterday and, yesterday, and then it was still open today. So I just, I tried to avoid it, and then I thought, well, I'm going to go look.
We're, we're training you. Bayer obviously has to mobilize and.
They have to stage it, yeah.
Get their equipment out there and get their traffic control company out there.
Well, I, I, I think we've been doing a better job of maintenance with regard to the, the overlays and the potholes. But I also know that we're, after six years, we're pushing the amount of money we put into it. And so in the future, we're going to have to put more money into it just to have reasonable. We've been very ambitious also with our North Campus corridor and our street improvements and all the things we've been doing, and our citizens kind of are getting weary, I think. But summer is the time to do it. And so as far as I'm concerned, every project we have is underway right now. So it's, it is the season.
It'd be nice to get off the arterials for a while at some point and leave them alone and then plow into the neighborhoods, so at least only a fewer people are affected at a time, and so.
Yeah.
What else you got?
Um, I'll just wrap up. We will put out on the city webpage the full report from the consultant. I can't remember, Commissioner Butler, you might have asked me a few months ago about a pavement condition index map. That's in this report, so you can see the different colors. The only thing I'll say, we don't always do the worst first. You know, it's kind of that balancing act of, of needs. Then there's also a map in there of the computer picked which roadway segments I should go do. So that map is out there as well, so we'll be looking at that. Surprise, surprise, Grand Mirror, Kimball, Candlewood. I mentioned the Northview area, Walters Drive, Anderson Avenue. So even, I guess I can get lucky once in a while, I could say, because I had similar segments selected as the computer as well. Again, we have to make them complete and whole projects. We can't just do a bunch of random segments everywhere. We try and keep contractors concentrated the best we can, so. Uh, let's see here, what else was the other map? Yeah, that's just post PCI. But anyways, this full report will be out on the city website, and I'm sure my PowerPoint will be. So, Mayor, Commissioners?
About the Safe Routes to School, we had a big list of those projects that we wanted to accomplish, and we've been chipping away at them and making progress. Is that list reduced now to the point that we don't have to make it such a high priority? Or are we still, or do we have to have another 10 years of Safe Routes to School improvements? Can we, instead of five percent, can we do three percent? I'm just asking the question, so as we move through this.
It, it is certainly a hundred percent at the discretion of the commission.
Well, sure, but we don't know.
It, it all depends upon what do you feel like facilities are adequate to serve the various schools and neighborhoods? And it's, you know, I mentioned before, we have an updated master plan. There's another 16 or 17 projects on there. There's a couple that Brian and I need to review that have received negative feedback. He and I may cut those and make a decision. But again, it's, they went out to the community and they identified more.
It's been so long ago, I don't remember.
Yeah, it's okay.
So.
But again, the answer.
You'll have to tee it up again.
Again, I'll just say it's really at the discretion of the commission. And what sort of facilities you want to provide to your schools.
And talk to the school district, Ron. I'm sure they'll have something, some things to add.
Yeah, so Rob mentioned that we've actually updated the, the planning document with new projects that we, that would continue to be brought forward. You know, and, and you had the ADA report, which showed there's, how far do you take those segments? I mean, into, into neighborhoods to walk to schools. There's a lot that could be, some of that could be addressed versus, I think we have to, I think we said five percent would go to Safe Routes.
That was in the ballot question.
Right, so I don't think you could divert this one. You might, if, if you accomplish most of it on the renewal, you may not need to do as much in the renewal.
I just think it's something we should evaluate and look at, so. And I may not be here when that happens, so I was just raising the issue.
Sure.
Probably won't be here when that happens. No may to it.
Mayor, Commissioners, any other questions?
I think that we can put a lid on that one. What else you got?
That's all I have, sir.
Wait a minute, there were supposed to be three things you talked about. I guess it was all, oh, this flowed into the other, huh?
Yeah.
Okay.
You didn't mention brick streets and, and grants for that.
No.
Which was on top of the four million, the only reason I mentioned it.
Yeah.
Is, is a lot of people ask me questions about that. Why did we invest in the, in the brick streets on Juliet? And of course, the reason was that was a historic grant, and it was on top of the four million, and so it made sense, so.
Yeah, we essentially paid the same value if we had just put it in concrete. And we were able to save that historic component of the bricks. We made the intersections ADA compliant, drained better, added stormwater improvements. You know, Ron mentioned the ADA report. We updated all those ramps between Blumenton and Points and so on and so forth, just like we're doing at Juliet and Blumenton as well. It's a high pedestrian crossing point, so, yeah, we leverage.
So are there going to be any more of those? Is, is there future plans?
We do have a grant for Juliet from Points to Pierre Street. So basically, through the Catholic school, we've got a KDOT grant. And again, our match probably come out of the gas tax. And the KDOT grant will help do all those improvements, the traffic calming. There's just cones and sticks and paint right now at Pierre and Juliet, but that'll turn into actual, similar to Point's Avenue did with the ball bouts and so forth.
Okay, so that's going to continue, great.
Yeah, that'll continue to Pierre, but then I don't have any more. Unless, unless you tell me to.
Okay, thank you. We will open up. Okay, thank you. We will, uh, open it up for public comment since there's a couple of people here that, um, might have, uh, something to say or not. I guess not, okay. We will close public comment on this and, uh, move to the, um, city manager briefing.
Thank you, Commissioners. I don't have, uh, much to, uh, update you on, uh, today. Um, we do have, uh, just a reminder that Commissioner Motta is scheduled for the month of June for radio shows, uh, for the two legislative meetings. Uh, the joint city-county county meeting is, uh, scheduled for June fifteenth, uh, at the county and Evergy is, uh, planning to make a presentation on some of their transmission lines. If, uh, we have an intergovernmental luncheon, it would be June twenty-sixth. Also, I want to remind you of invitations for Victory Week. Uh, it's a combined Military Relations Committee and the Junction City Military Association Committee that, uh, Military Affairs Committee that have a joint breakfast on post at Riley's. That's on, uh, June fourteenth, Wednesday at eight AM. I need to respond to the clerk's office by June sixth. There's a ribbon cutting, uh, this Thursday, uh, from three thirty to five. Uh, at the Canyon Creek Senior Housing Ribbon, or Senior Housing Program. That's, uh, uh, at eight hundred Wild Oak Place and I think, uh, the three of you have all RSVP'd for that, so we do plan to notice that. And then the Flag Day, annual Flag Day celebration is here at City Hall on June fourteenth at nine AM. And I think all three of you here have also RSVP'd for that. Uh, on the planning chart, um, I'll just, uh, look at that a little bit for the June sixth meeting coming up. Uh, we've got, um, four general agenda items, uh, the first reading of the potential rezoning of four oh seven Potawatomi Avenue, that's an item that, uh, uh, we sent back and started the process over due to a publication error. That's at the planning board, uh, this Thursday for their consideration. And then, uh, we also have a first reading consideration of a rezoning for the Browning Town Homes. It's going from, uh, residential to, uh, a little higher density residential there to, it's an infill on some vacant lots that, uh, have some townhomes across the street. Uh, actually, those are duplexes across the street, so that'll, that's also on this Thursday's planning board meeting. And then, uh, rezoning requests for the reserve at the Manhattan Country Club and that's also on the planning board for this Thursday. Uh, we also have an item we'd like to bring to you on the Leave Mill Village, uh, for the remaining lots that we have, that we haven't sold, to look at potentially putting that into a, uh, an MIH program, so Modern Income Housing Proposal to the State. We would do an RFP to see if there might be a developer that would, uh, want to partner with us to make that MIH application on either some or all of the remaining lots, uh, instead of continuing the, uh, real estate, uh, brokering deal that we've been working on, so, uh-
Well, and it's just, uh, the land's just sitting there, so-
It is.
We would be pushing to, to get some housing, because that's what we need, yeah.
I think that's a great plan. We need, we need to get rid of those lots and this is one way to do it.
Because there's tax specials that are still accumulating that we're paying, right, on some of that?
There are, yes.
Yeah.
And we have sold three lots that, that have, beyond the senior project that's being dedicated. That's, that's where that is, so.
Good, sounds like a plan.
All right, and then, um, some of the consent agenda items. Uh, we've got some parking changes, uh, throughout the community. Some, uh, first reading of an ordinance to amend Chapter Two on Public Records, so records requests and some of the fees associated with that. And then, uh, we have a, we've moved the first reading to the municipal facility review for the central kitchen. This is the school district and bus project out on Hayes. Uh, this is one that, uh, uh, they've partnered with us on that project, uh, because we're putting in a wider trail to eventually have that wide sidewalk all the way from McCall to Casement.
Yeah.
And we're having to put in storm sewer on that project. Um, and so it's really squeezing them on the amount of space that they have available. So, uh, that was a unanimous approval by the planning board on that item, so I just wanted to make sure you all were comfortable because normally we would've had that kind of rezoning on your general agenda.
Yeah, we, we caused it, we need to fix it.
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, I don't know that we caused it. We had good cooperation.
Yeah, it was, yeah.
It impacted-
Impacted.
Our moving, uh, that project through eliminated the planting ban that they would normally be required to have between their and their parking lot. So, uh, it would've, they would've lost a lot of parking if we, we wouldn't make this accommodation.
All right.
Uh, let's see, I think, uh, we've got another round that Rob mentioned, uh, on the phase-two bid opening for the concrete maintenance, so it sounds like we did get a bidder. Uh, a lot of second readings there, got a final plat, uh, grant from the task grant from, uh, for the Flunhills Discovery Center.
What, what is one fifty-one coffee?
So one, one fifty-one coffee is the land that's between Tuttle Creek Boulevard and North Third Street, north of Sonic and that shed.
Oh, yeah.
It's where the, there's a-
Used to be a quarry.
Truck, truck park there.
Yeah.
Um, now, and so it's a, it's a plat, final plat for that property.
Yeah, okay. And, uh, so it's gonna change?
Yes.
Uh-huh, okay.
Well, it's, it's, it's been kind of undefined no man's land.
Yeah.
Partial KDOT right-of-way and I think, uh, the, I think the, the food truck that's there, or I think it's a food truck-
Yeah.
Is wanting to have a more permanent nature there. And so I think, I think the owner has bought that and is planning-
But the big metal building isn't gonna leave?
I don't know.
Okay, it's, if you don't, if you don't know-
I don't, I don't know that it involves the track for the metal building. And I think it's the land north of that.
The north part, okay, thank you.
But I'm not a hundred percent sure.
Yeah, okay.
Uh, we do have, uh, a donor-initiated public art for the Discovery Center on a sculpture agreement and then, uh, a check presentation that night from the Flunhills Discovery Center Foundation to pay for it, uh, if it's approved.
Yay.
Yeah, and, uh, an RFQ for the Sunset Zoo Trust Project. They're wanting to proceed with some, uh, design and fundraising for some additional improvements at Sunset Zoo. And then also, we're looking at the RFP for the Animal Shelter Services, uh, to also be on that night's agenda. On the twentieth meeting, uh, we have a, uh, resolution that we'd like you to consider. The, uh, bulk of the work's been done on the copyright investigation for the Johnny Call statute. So we want to bring those findings to you and recommendations and want you to pass a resolution regarding that, so.
I, I want it settled.
Yeah, yeah.
I don't want to-
This should make it definitive.
Be approached and, and not have a policy and can't do things, so I, I want closure, yeah. It's been a year.
Um, these aren't listed yet, but it's likely that we will have a renewal with the Riley County Rural Water District Number One for their, uh, twenty-year agreement for wholesaling water, um, to them. And just, it's a, you know, no big changes. I think it could be a consent agenda item, but I think it's important for you to understand. It's a pretty long agreement, so.
Where is Rural Water District Number One?
West, west and north.
West and north, okay.
West side of the lake.
Yeah.
All the way to, well, Ogden has their own.
So it's a big one?
It's a pretty big one.
Okay, thank you.
Um, and then, uh, we may also have a presentation, uh, on the, on the base grant that we were awarded, the one point five million from the state relative to, and some recommendations relative to the build-out of the spaces at the, uh, parking garage for entrepreneurship utilization and some, uh, proposals from the various partners that wanted to lease that space, uh, for those developments and a funding plan for, uh, building out that space. Yeah, otherwise, on that agenda, we have, uh, oh, the first reading of an amendment to, for Stadium Place, that's a new name. That's a planned unit development and it's catty-corner from the football stadium, um, on the west northwest of the stadium. Uh, that's a PUD. Short-term rentals are not allowed in that PUD and so they're wanting a amendment of the PUD to allow for short-term rentals. So that's, that's currently scheduled to be at the June eighth planning board meeting. A lot of second readings there on various items. Uh, anticipate having, uh, a recommendation for award of a contract for the Douglas Center parking lot, finally, on that east side, uh, that includes relocating that freezer, um, uh, for them and a new freezer that the CBG funds are purchasing, uh, for the breadbasket, so, uh, hopefully.
I think about that went along with Doug, building the Douglas Center. I mean, when we talked about it, we had parking along the Douglas Center Park there on the west side and, uh, parking there close to the Douglas Center Annex. And so, and that-
It's moving and, uh, there'll be more, there'll be more parking, right?
Right.
Is that the plan?
Yeah, it's a, it's a net increase in parking.
I haven't, I haven't seen-
Especially since we're relocating the freezer out of the parking lot.
I haven't seen a revised plan, that's all I'm saying, okay.
But it is just the parking lot, it doesn't have any of the other on-street aspects. Uh, and hopefully we'll have some bidders.
Yeah.
Um, I have a final plat on North Wing. We have a RFQ for the Seco Park improvements and this is, uh, relative to, this is the last, uh, uh, projects that are part of the quality life bond issue, the sales tax that built the new rec centers.
I'd like to be on that selection committee.
All right.
I'll put my name right now.
Okay.
And is that gonna be, you know, people have been talking about that and I guess my, my question is, I know on the, uh, on the ballot issue, we, we just talked ball fields, trails and tennis courts.
Right.
And then we've got the USD eighty-three talking about other things like track and field and all that, so.
Yeah, I, I think the analysis is gonna have to be done is, uh, you know, what did the question commit us to doing? And then how much, if you have flexibility to add to that, because there's additional funds, that would prob, be a possibility, I'm not, uh, it will be difficult to not do something we said we were gonna do.
Yeah, and that's, you know, that's where I'm at on that one. People ask me that question, I said, I, you know, that's a nice idea, the USD has what?
Yeah.
I, I think we've got to do what we said we were gonna do.
Right, and I, and I think obviously revenue streams have been productive, uh, from that, so I think there are some more funds, uh, things are costing more also. I think it's gonna depend on, uh, ultimately what all gets designed and how much flexibility is there for additional revenue. There may be some opportunity to partner with some entities too. Uh, there's some, certainly some economy scales for a contractor to do work, more work while they're in that area. So there, there could be some possibilities if the school district or the county wanna jump in and, and do some improvements along with it.
Will we see this again before we get a, um, something final? So that we, uh, you would go review the possibilities?
So this is just the selection of a, of a consultant to start the design?
Yeah, but you gotta know what you're gonna design.
Yeah, and they'll, they'll, you'll bring the scope of services and all of that back to you for approval.
That implies you know what you want.
And then you go through a design process.
We don't know what we want.
Well, I think the question's pretty specific about the types of improvements. There's options for that, so there's design options that you're gonna get into on each of those, whether it's, uh, you know, the original concept, I think it was two baseball, two softball fields, uh, and twelve tennis courts.
Twelve tennis courts.
Right. Didn't say twelve pickleball courts, it said twelve tennis courts. So those are the, those are the-
Yeah.
We're gonna have to do what we said we were gonna do and then how do we do that? And in what form are they?
Okay.
Uh, those are the, those are the issues, but it, it originally, I believe, spoke to synthetic turf. That was a, you know, the, the center structure likely will have to be demoed. That's a very old, the plumbing's all shot, um, in that central building, so what are you gonna put back for public restrooms and concession stands and score boxes or not? You know, type of thing, so all of that will go through some different design scenarios for people to be involved in and give feedback for.
All right.
All right, and then, uh-
Go forth, Mark.
There you go.
And then we should have a recommendation on the, uh, Sunset Avenue, so. And that's all I got, Mayor. Oh, work session wise, uh, just a quick note on the thirteenth, uh, planning for the cemetery master plan preliminary review and then, uh, first budget work session and then the budgets work sessions will dominate after that.
Okay, okay. All right, uh, what do you, uh, what do you guys got that we need to know about?
Um, I had, uh, I went to, um, Anchorage, uh, last week. My granddaughter graduated from high school and I appreciated, you know, one thing COVID has done is, uh, make it more usual and normal for us to join meetings, uh, virtually and I appreciated that opportunity and, uh, I was, you know, in the old days, we had trouble with the connections and it was smooth sailing. It worked out really well and I appreciate the, um, Jared, appreciate you making sure I, uh, connected and all, and so it was a good trip. I, uh, of course was disappointed I didn't get to fly out of Manhattan, but I flew out of Kansas City, so I got to try the new terminal there and, uh, it, it worked very well. But, uh, so I was really interested and this week I called, uh, I got in touch with Ron and, uh, ended up with, um, uh, the airport director, uh, who, Brandon Kiezer.
Kiezer.
Kiezer, who gave me a tour of the, um, jumbolizing, rubb- rubb- rubb-abilizing, yes. And, um, uh, all the equipment that's happening out there and it's really interesting. I hope you would have an opportunity to do that also. Uh, it, all the money we're spending on it and I think it's important that we're able to talk to the public about what the process is and the good news is that it's supposed to open, uh, again. We're supposed to reopen the airport either Sep-, but September fifth for sure, but hopefully by September first because there's, uh, K-State reasons. Don't know exactly what they are, but anyway, having that open again will make such a big difference. And I was struck by how convenient it is to fly out of Manhattan rather than making the Kansas City, uh, trip.
So either any of the Commissioners want to see that same thing?
Yeah.
Contact Brandon.
Yeah, every time I drive by, I think I need to get a hold of Brandon and I need to look at it and-
And, uh, the Clarkson Construction Company is there and they, uh, they don't have to go out on the street or the road. They just have the whole thing, it's shut down, so they have the whole thing for themselves. And they, and, and the other contractors are working well together. Uh, I also wanted to point out that there's, uh, an RFP currently for con- the concession area at the airport. Uh, we've been functioning with, um, con- what do you call them? Vending machines and, uh, so we, um, it's, it's just hard to sustain a business, you know, when there are intermittent flights like that, so, uh, I, I appreciate the problem, but I also want a good cup of coffee. I, I'm ready to get my own little Keurig cup, my own machine or something. Anyway, um, I want to call attention to the Memorial Day and maybe, Ron, you want to make an announcement about, I've seen it on the city's website, that on, um, May twenty-ninth, the, um, municipal band will be at Sunset, maybe I'll just go ahead, at Sunset Zoo at nine thirty. Uh, and, um, then I, also it's on, um, the K-State Band Director's website, so there's a lot of attention, uh, and, uh, but it's the annual, uh, Memorial Day program and I assume, I, I couldn't find that the American Legion had an event on their website, at least there's nothing there. And, uh, the DAR usually does the, um, uh, program at Sunset, uh, at Sunset Cemetery. So maybe things will come together and maybe it'll just last-minute type stuff. But then there's a band, um, con- concert at, um, at the Norvell Band Show, uh, at seven thirty on the night of the twen- of the twenty-ninth also. So there's a lot to do and, uh, it's always uplifting to, um, make sure we think about the wars that we've been through and the hardships that they cause and, um, it's, uh, it's always a thoughtful time for me at least, so I just wanted to bring that to everyone's attention. Thanks.
I just want to mention, I'm on the senior center board and and they've got, you know, some concerns because I guess the city owns a building, but they're not really under the city. And the county gives them some money and they're not really under the county. And they got some issues with like HR benefits. They only have two employees. And you got a senior center board, so I don't know if I can sit down and talk to you about just some of their things that they're what what they need is a little bit of help in the HR department and some other things. Because because you got, you know, board members there that have no expertise in it. And, you know, Jamie, of course, who was there for what, thirty years, you know, ran all this stuff and and didn't want benefits. And so now you've got two employees and they think they should get benefits and they don't even have any idea how to structure it. And then there's some confusion, like when they hired, and the lady's doing a great job. But uh, you know, they said, well, y- your salary will be salary plus seven and a half percent in benefits, but there are no benefits. There's no insurance, medical plan, nothing. And so I'm not really sure how to approach, you know, sorting it out, and for sure, the senior center can't afford to hire an HR person. So if if there's some way we can, you know, assist them or maybe for a small fee or whatever, just give that some thought and and I'll I'll maybe make some time next week to come by and visit with you on it.
Okay.
And I'm on the board of the Area Agency on Aging, and they, their employees are the cook, the assistant cook and the coordinator for, that handles the meals, registration and all that. And they uh are under the gun, have been, to provide health insurance and benefits also. So they're asking the county to pay the the health insurance because the county does operations. And the county has um been squeezing and squeezing to the point that they can't squeeze the Area Agency any further. And the Area Agency provides the friendship meals there and orders the food and employs the cooks. So, you know, worst case is possibly even cutting one day a week for the friendship meals uh because the county has to, and and so they're appealing to the county. Uh they're going to their budget sessions to impress upon them the importance of, um you know, it hasn't, the budget hasn't increased hardly at all to that county council on aging. That anyway, just to, it's it's more involved than when said.
Since since you brought that up, you know, the the senior center is supplementing the salaries of those cooks. Because what happens is the agency for aging is paying them.
Yeah.
But the senior center is giving them a couple more dollars an hour because their salary is so insufficient. We couldn't keep the program going. And so so part of the problem with the with the senior board is just that, you've got, you get three agencies involved and all of them are doing a piece of it, and you got one, one lady, you know, you know, trying to run the show down there and 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 walk the fence line between.
Maybe all of those should merge.
Well.
Perhaps.
They need to come together and work out some kind of agreement, and that's not what was happening when Jamie was there. It was. I I also wanted to fail to mention was is, and there was a, there's a big article item in the Manhattan Mercury today about Manhattan Day, and I'm sure you're uh working with that, but it's coming right up. Um it's an annual celebration. This time it's on Saturday, June third. Uh and the Manhattan Mercury offers, but they encourage block parties or neighbors to get together. And uh I think the Manhattan Mercury provide, Dylan's provides the buns and um, I don't know. I, anyway, just uh I'm sure you'll have something on your website. I haven't seen it yet.
Well, it's it's not really a city-driven thing.
It's not. We participate.
Yeah.
We we waive the fees for the block parties and we also distribute cones that people can come pick up. It's kind of a kit. They distribute the hot dogs out of here as well, so we kind of serve as a resource center and and we do ask for people, if they want to get a block party permit, then we we do issue that and we do waive the fee, though.
That's Wine in the Wild night, so a lot of people are going to go party there.
Well, this is scheduled from noon to four PM, so.
See you, you both.
Yeah.
Anyway, that's when you pick things up. I don't know. I have a not sponsoring one, so I didn't pay that much attention, but I do want to call attention. Uh nationally, there's.
Something called Neighborhood Night Out, but it happens in, first week in August when nobody's in our, you know, people are gone here. So Manhattan Day is our Neighborhood Night Out time, and it works really well.
And if anybody's having a block party and would like to invite a Commissioner or the Mayor to join them, please email us through the city website.
I remember when Bruce Sneed rode his bicycle around this community to every one of those neighborhood, of those Manhattan Day events. And I just marveled at. He stayed fifteen or twenty minutes because he had to get on to the next one. Must have been ten or twelve of them.
All right, Jared, you got anything for us? Nope, anything else?
No.
All right, in that case, I would look for a motion to adjourn.
Can I move, we adjourn the work session?
Second.
All right, it's been moved to second to adjourn the meeting. Please call the roll.
Commissioner Butler.
Yes.
Commissioner Morse.
Yes.
Mayor Hattasol.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Very good. The meeting.